Good evening. I would like to call the order Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. Item number one would be the Board of Public Works regular meeting from February 5th, 2024.
Motion approved.
I have a motion by Alderman Allen, who was the second?
Second.
Second, Justice. Are there any corrections or... Okay, there are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, relocation orders, safety improvement at three intersections along State 33. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is part of our project to improve three intersections along Washington Street at Eighteenth Avenue, Seventh Avenue, and River Road. We entered into a state municipal agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. We're receiving federal funding for this project. And as part of the project, we will need to acquire land and land rights in order to upgrade those intersections. And so attached with the memo, you have the plat and the relocation order to allow us to do that land acquisition process. So therefore, we're recommending the board and council adopt a relocation order and so the real estate acquisition can proceed. Do you have any questions?
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Alderman Allen and the second?
Second.
Alderman, Justice. Is there any questions for Max? There are no questions. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn as chair. All right. Finance, I would like to call the order Finance Committee. We have six items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of minutes from January 22nd, 6:25 PM.
Motion to approve.
Second. Alderman Berquist, Alderman Allen, any deletions or additions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, resolution authorizing the sale and appropriation of funds of parks, recreation, and forestry departments plus equipment. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, our department is requesting permission to transfer auction sale funds from a revenue account to an expenditure account. Recently, our department sold several pieces of old equipment at auction. This equipment was everything from an old stall from the old beach house, an ice cream cooler from the beach house, push mowers, used power pruners, even a 1988 five-yard dump truck. So this evening, we are requesting the transfer of the $27,574. We received an auction sales that went into a revenue account. We need to move to an expenditure account. And then we would like to use those funds to purchase one utility vehicle with the winter package and snowplow equipment. So we're getting rid of 18 old pieces of equipment out of inventory that we no longer have to maintain and babysit. We're purchasing one utility vehicle with that money.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Alderman Sternig and Alderman Allen. Any questions for Mike? There are no questions. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Item number three, resolution accepting a donation from Walmart.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chiefs.
Chiefs. Yeah. Up for your partners in public safety. I was about to say partners in crime, but that one really... We're here in front of you to accept a joint donation from Walmart in the form of gift cards. Walmart on January 31st came to both our departments and offered a $450 gift card to each department. Just process-wise, because it's a gift card, it doesn't go into the fund balance all, but we wanted to, one, make sure that you were aware of the donation so we could thank Walmart, and then also just give us a chance. Chief has some plans for his. Police Department will be using the funds just to cover our special event costs and water for the parades and things along those lines that come up. Chief?
The fire department will be using the funds for the fire department towards Captain Nazlin's hard work with the smoke detector, CO detector program.
So we certainly make it a point that it is never necessary. We're very appreciative, but it is definitely not necessary for those funds. As John Fitzgerald, the manager at Walmart, as we were talking about that exact fact, he said, "Well, I wish there was something more that you could do." So I immediately recruited him. And John, I'm proud to say, is now a member of our Crime Prevention Patrol. So you will see him out at those special events as a team member of ours as well. So thank you very much.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thanks to the council.
Okay, Alderman Allen and Alderman Berquist. We have motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, approval of an intergovernment agreement with the City of Hartford for building inspection services. Jay?
Yeah, I'll start. And then if there's any legal questions regarding the agreement, Ian can certainly jump in. This is a great example of two municipalities working together. The City of Hartford approached us regarding backup inspection services a few months ago. We've been negotiating the contract or the agreement and talking through how it might serve as a win for Hartford and not overly tax our building inspectors and still be able to provide this level of service that our constituents expect in West Bend. This agreement, we believe, does that. They will be acting on it in the City of Hartford as well. So the way the agreement works is when their inspector, they have one full-time inspector that serves the City of Hartford, has vacation predetermined vacation days or items that he's not able to cover within Hartford, we will cover with our inspectors. Our licensed inspectors have the ability to work in Hartford. And we've determined those duties on who's doing what and what overall Hartford duties will still exist and how we're just going to fill in or supplant their duties when need be. Again, I think it's a great example of two governments working together, intergovernmental cooperation. And I'm proud of our guys and the inspection team to come up with this agreement and the terms of such, and then working with Hartford as well. So if there's any questions, I can attempt to answer them. Or again, legally, Ian helped draft the agreement and serves as counsel for both entities.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen and the second?
Second.
Alderman Model, any questions for Jay? Alderman Allen.
All right. Jay, is there any agreement or any possibility that we would make use of Hartford's inspector here?
No.
Okay.
We do use a contracted service for a backup of our inspectors if we ever need it. And that works really well for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? There are no questions. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number five, resolution accepting donations to the fire department. Good evening, Chief.
Hello. Very happy to be back in front of you again. Before you, it was a resolution for you to consider to accept several donations from public citizens here in West Bend and appropriate them to the smoke detector, carbon dioxide detector program. $100 was donated by George and Kathy Rorig, $50 by Dorothy Wise Graff, $25 from Irene Gerald Wilding, and $25 from Mr. Thomas Nemechek. Again, we can't stress the importance of this program enough. You know, the first and most important step to responding to emergency is somebody to be alerted of a dangerous or life-threatening situation. Captain Nazlin's been working very hard at installing both smoke detectors, carbon oxide detectors, and even some combustible gas detectors throughout the community. He's all the time routinely finding very outdated detectors or non-functioning detectors. And these types of programs really make the difference in saving lives in the community. So we're very thankful for their donations and thank you for your consideration.
Motion to approve.
Motion was Alderman Model and second? Alderman Spears, any questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number six, resolution for correction of 2023 taxes, Wiza LLC. Good evening.
Good evening. Before you, you have a resolution I'm bringing to you for the correction of taxes for Wiza LLC, and the parcel number is 1119-141-0576. And this property owner did call us after he received his tax bill. He did not call us during open book or board review during our revaluation last year. But upon talking with him and looking at our records, we had the unit count incorrect. So it's a five-unit or it's a four-unit apartment, and we assessed it as a five-unit. So I'm asking the council to consider a correction and refund the taxes indifference. Comes to $75,600 in the assessment. The net adjustment of taxes is $919.89. Any questions?
Motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Alderman Model and Alderman Sternig, any questions? Alderman Allen.
How does that work that just having the unit count wrong would assess, cause it to be assessed differently? I mean, obviously, the square footage of the building didn't change. The size of the real property did not change.
Yes. For the apartments, we do use an income model. So it is based on how many units they have, and it does have a huge impact if you have one unit off in a small apartment like that.
Any other questions? There are none. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as chair.
Good evening. It is Monday, February 19th, 6:36 PM, and this is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin State statute. I'd like to ask our clerk to confirm this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do recognize a quorum of our council tonight with Alderman Dolnick under the weather, and we hope he feels better soon. I'd like to welcome Scout Troop 796, who is here tonight, working on a citizenship and the community merit badge observing tonight's meeting. So welcome. Our first item of business is approval of our minutes of our Common Council regular meeting held on February 5th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Model and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our first presentation tonight is on our workplace survey, and I think Jess Wildes is going to kick that one off.
I'll just get it loaded here. Thank you, Common Council. I'll try and go through this quickly. I know we have a lot on the agenda tonight. You also have this document in your packets. And I did combine a couple of the slides to make it move a little bit quicker and put a next step slide at the end. So we can post that if needed. In December, the City of West Bend did its first employee workplace survey. We were exploring the Journal Sentinels Top Workplaces program that they have and really felt the need to gain insight from our employees on their work experience and the work culture here at the City of West Bend. And through that process, we worked to survey 311 employees. That included all full-time and all part-time employees. So also included our lifeguards and our crossing guards and everyone in between. So you can see, we had a 75% response rate to the survey. That's excellent. We had really great engagement. Our department head team really worked to encourage their staff to take part. We really wanted to hear honestly from them, and that was a great sample size. The company that we worked with, it's called EnerGage, was really skeptical of our goal of hitting 75%, which is what we wanted. And they said usually they're coming in in the 60s or so. So we felt good about that. Local government is our industry, and we were compared with 22 other organizations that fell into a similar number of employees sort of base. So between 200 and 1,000 employees, there were 22 organizations across the U.S. that sort of set the benchmark for our results. So our total results came in slightly less than the benchmark at 8% less in points. And we can kind of talk through a little bit of the themes throughout. And I'm happy to answer questions along the way or at the end as we go. You might see some lower scores since we scored a little bit lower than the benchmark. And, you know, that, some of them were surprising, and many of them were not, and are things that we've been working on over the last few years with the compensation study and all our retention efforts. But, you know, we did this not to see only positive or only negative. We really did this to be informed and to be able to make informed decisions moving forward and to really focus and prioritize on where we need to improve. So these are sort of the top three benchmark comparisons. The top positive responses that we received overall is really that the managers care about employee concerns and make them feel like they're, you know, employees feel like they're part of something meaningful. We'll kind of get to that later on. Where we scored lower, which you can see here, is that benefits, pay, and then feeling informed or clued in. So those are the top three items that we're going to work on moving forward, and I'll talk a little bit about that as we talk about the next steps at the end. The workplace experience themes, we'll talk a little bit more about like sort of the areas of larger gaps or places that we, you know, want to focus on for this presentation. But at the very end, sort of at the bottom here, it's fairly valued. That was the largest sort of gap between our responses as a city and the benchmark. We were down 14%. So value might mean feeling valued in pay or benefits, like we saw in some of these other categories. They might feel that in other ways, too. Engaged. So a couple of these statistics were, I thought, were more of the surprising ones and probably more challenging to sort of view and take into, to look forward to figuring out here. So one of them that was a little bit negative is that about half of our employees have looked at other jobs in the last year or so or last month. So that's definitely something we want to consider looking at. Also, the recommendation rate was a little bit low as well. So those are really going to be areas that we need to focus on for retention and just the general employee experience, being sure people enjoy working here and feel valued and empowered to do their best. Here, you can see that 80%, which is really strong and exciting, 80% of our employees who responded to the survey said that their job makes them feel that they're a part of something meaningful. That's great. They also feel that the city is going in the right direction. And then at the end, we had sort of a lower gap, lower than we'd like, in terms of operating by strong values at 11% below the benchmark. So feeling empowered to execute, again, a little bit lower than we like in some of the areas here compared to the benchmark, but areas that we can continue to improve. The largest gap was at the bottom, and then it was the response to, I feel well-informed in about important decisions at the City of West Bend. So we saw those few trends throughout, the information sharing or feeling well-informed or not, and then the pay and benefits. You can, we are able to kind of drill down into some of the departments and see those responses, and that will really inform us as we move forward with what we're going to do with this data. Respect and support. You can see here that we exceeded the benchmark and in the my manager cares about my concerns, that was consistent on some of the other questions that were similar to this. It seemed that people do feel that their manager cares about them and their well-being and listens to them. But also, at the same time, we scored lower when it came to sort of that feeling informed, empowered, and like appreciated. So those two sort of counterbalance each other, I guess, here. I mean, it's really important that employees feel valued. The ones who feel valued, you'll feel unheard, you'll feel empowered to do your best, and you'll take more pride in your work. So that's something that we'll be looking at. We'll be looking at ways that we can work with our elected officials, with our leaders, with our department heads, managers, to make sure that their employees are feeling that because I really do think that people who work here really do care about each other and able to grow. So this really kind of varied by department. So generally, we were close to or at the benchmark for feeling like a manager helps them to, our employees to grow, or that people get the direct training that they'd like. However, we were a little bit lower when it came to feeling like they were hitting their full potential. And again, I think that goes kind of back to some of the themes of value. Speaking of value, we hit really close again to the benchmark when it came to people feeling like their job meets their expectations or what they thought it was going to be when they came in. It also was pretty strong in feeling like they have the flexibility that they need to balance their work and personal life. But then again, sort of that similar trend with the pay and benefits came in quite a bit lower than the benchmark here. The next few slides, and we're almost through, talk a little bit about who took the survey and breaks it down by departments and demographics. So here are just the top five largest departments. We have many departments that all departments took the survey. You can see here's sort of the top five and the three that were maybe the highest and the couple that maybe were slightly lower than the benchmark here. Demographics, we're able to break down the data by level of senior management, manager, team member. So for their workplace experience score, sort of the senior managers scored a little bit low, as did the managers and team members scored, you know, negative six on the benchmark, but a little bit low as well. This slide just shows tenure, so the amount of time that people have spent at our organization. And it seems that some of the employees who have been here, you know, between one and three years or less are maybe scoring a little bit more positively than some of our more tenured employees of more than 15 years. Again, we did survey everybody, so part-time and full-time employees, and our part-time employees scored significantly higher or rated their experience working at the City of West Bend much higher than the benchmark and of that of full-time employees. Salary bands breaks it down another way as well. So based on salary, you can see down at the less than $30,000, that's likely more of our part-time employees, and that is mimicking the positive response that we saw in the last slide. Supplemental statements are just a few things that really sort of carried through in the responses here. And, you know, some maybe point of pride here is that my employer is socially responsible in the community. That's really positive. I think that really speaks to the work that's done by all of our departments, but also just the organization's commitment to do, to do good by our community, to continue to improve and to give back in meaningful ways. Research, here you can see that people responded positively about having confidence in the leadership of City of West Bend and opportunities to learn and grow, and maybe a little bit less positive in that, you know, they felt that we're doing a good job prioritizing their employee well-being, or, you know, that we also had quite a few respond that they would consider looking at another job. Next steps, we have a lot of data. So our team, our department head team has met, has reviewed this report. They have their own departmental reports because we were able to drill down a little bit on some of this high-level data for departments that were larger in size. And what we're going to do is take sort of from this information and learn and make some decisions that we think will be positive. So one of the trends or the themes was information sharing, feeling like a well-informed employee. So we really want to improve our internal communications. Been working with Jay and Michelle and with Carissa to create an internal employee email that we're going to be sending out bi-weekly. So we already send our weekly public email out to our constituents, to 13,000 people. But we really want something that's geared toward educating and informing employees, letting them know about benefits or wellness activities, or acknowledging employees, honoring them for their successes. And so we're going to be working through and having a consistent email newsletter called Connect. We're also going to focus on continuing to implement the compensation study. The other couple of themes that came out in this continue to be paying benefits. And those did not surprise us because we're still working through that, but that's definitely a priority. And then furthermore, we're going to have conversations with department heads, supervisors, managers, to talk through the data, to talk through their specific department data, and really try to learn from it and see what can be done to continue to improve morale and the feeling of value and to just continue to listen to employees and respond appropriately. And then last is to repeat the survey in the future. You don't know unless you ask, so it's important that we did this. Really glad that we did. Feedback's a gift, even if it's hard or if it's wonderful. But if we do this again, I hope that we can see some improvement and if, you know, no matter what, it's a worthwhile thing for us to do and to learn from our employees and listen. So happy to answer any questions if you have any. Yeah?
Yes, I'm really glad you guys did this study. It is, you're right, you don't know unless you ask. And I think some of this follow-up stuff's a really good idea, especially that last one. I mean, this is, we can think of this as like a baseline, right?
Yeah.
So if you don't ask again, you don't know if you've improved on things, right? So I think the next one's going to be even more important. So I hope we have a plan for getting that on the calendar for two years down the road or five years down the road. I don't know what the appropriate timeframe would be, but it'd be great to know if we've improved on some of that stuff.
I agree. Thanks.
Did I hear you say the other benchmarks were from municipalities around the country? They're not just Wisconsin?
Yep. I think there may have been one other Wisconsin municipality, and they don't tell us who. It's all confidential. We don't see individual employee results. We don't see exactly who took it or received top workplace, but we just know they're in a like category of 200 to 1,000 employees.
Is there an opportunity in the survey where employees could have open comments? Where like maybe, I don't know, if an employee took the time to give some direct feedback on how something could improve?
Yes.
And so we assume have that. Yep.
Any other questions? Mr. Allen?
Yep. The partner question, it wasn't really clear how that related. Is that a question they asked? They were out, the employees were asked relative to partnering with the community? Or were these comments or received from partners of the city?
Partner. Hmm. I'm not sure partner question you're referring to, Mark.
Mark, are you referring to the...
It says partner. Percent favorable by partner statement.
It says my employer is socially responsible in a community. That's the reference.
Yeah.
Yep. So that one scored really high. That, I took that as a significant positive that our organization is very involved in the community and has a social role and is responsible.
Any other questions? Alderman Butch, look.
Yeah, I just want to jump on Justin Model's comment. I think that's a great idea to come back again two, three, four, or five years or so to see exactly, this is a platform now for where we're at and to see if hopefully we follow through some of the comments that they've mentioned. And it's, hopefully, it'll be much better, I'd say much better sense, complete, whatever I'm trying to say. What I'm trying to say is it should improve the stats, statistics of what we did before.
Yep.
Alderman Allen?
Yeah, I'd actually recommend we do it in a year. I mean, this is something we should be doing annually.
My only comment on that is you better make some changes. Otherwise, you're just going to make everybody mad. If you keep surveying and we aren't trying to do anything to improve and we just keep surveying, that's not going to go over well either. So I don't know what the timeframe is on when you resurvey or not either, but I think it really starts with we need to come up with some action plans on how to address, you know, the overall themes and the areas that we see that need improvement. And then, of course, surveying again afterwards to make sure... And, and then of course, surveying again afterwards to make sure that we're on the right path and focusing on the right things.
Do you know, Jess, does this company have a recommendation on when to resurvey?
I'm sure that they do. They just recommended that we do resurvey.
Yeah, okay.
We'll work with them on that.
Sure.
Does the company also work with involving on the next steps, or work with you on implementing the next steps?
Yeah, so they, they can, and we can explore that more with them. They talked through the results with our team and with our, our core team on the survey. And then also provided some documents on action planning and some additional sort of tools that we can use for each department, because every department's a little bit different in their responses and their sort of own sort of mini environment. So yes, they provided some helpful tools and guidance.
Any more questions?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We're going to move on to our next agenda item here, and this, this relates to a petition to the Secretary of Transportation for Airport Improvement Aid. And this action item requires a public hearing. And so this is an official public hearing on the West Bend Municipal Airport Aid Petition Request. And so if there's anybody from the public who wishes to address the council on this topic, please step up to the mic.
Motion to close a public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close Alderman Model and Alderman Sternig. All in favor for closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move on to our consent agenda tonight. The consent agenda is items two through seven in your packet.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Model and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And our first item for action tonight is the resolution petitioning the Secretary of Transportation for Airport Improvement Aid. Jay?
So this is the action for the public hearing that you just had. This went to the Airport Commission a week or so ago. Think of it as the CIP for the, for the airport for the next handful or so years. It does include some more minor things that in, in order for us to receive state and federal funding, it has to be on this approved list. So that's, that's the legal requirement for going through Airport Commission and now City Council. And it's got some pretty meaty things on this list as well. So the airport expansion is part of this list and gives us the opportunity to continue to study and, and further explore that. That is going to be a significant project for the City of West Bend, and one that we're working through the environmental stage and the assessment stage of at this point, and then we'll be continuing to communicate with you as that gets closer to expansion. But I would say that's the most significant item on this list. We do have items that we have found and identified some funding for, and so again, approving this will put us in position to get those items funded and, and improved yet this, in this coming year and year after that. Mike Shaw, our part-time airport manager, leads this for us. He does a great job. He, he works closely with the DOT BOA, and then also with the FAA, both again, state and federal agencies that work on the airport, not just expansion, but airport management and funding as a whole. So know that, that we're in good hands with Mike, and, and we're, we're really pleased that he kind of dabbles in this for us on the side. He's, doesn't have to do it, he does it because he has a passion and really appreciates the airport. I'll attempt to answer any questions, but that's, that's really the, the bulk of why we're doing this today.
Thank you, Jay. The resolution is in your packet. I will entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen. I'll give the second to Alderman Sparts. Any comments, questions, discussion? Alderman Sparts?
Just a note too, all the items on the CIP do not have to be done. It's, they have to be on there for consideration. So if, if in the future we look at it and we decide not to do it, it doesn't have to be done. Just an FYI.
Good point. No more discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm now going to take up items number 10 and 11 on our agenda tonight. Jess, why don't I ask you to enter, introduce Craig and Kevin and Claire and kick off this topic? Thank you.
So tonight we have Craig Hubner here from Grave. He is the consultant that was hired to do the Downtown Master Plan and Downtown Streetscape Master Plan. So he's going to be, there, Craig is here, and going to present on both the documents that will be before you tonight for potential action. And you mentioned others in our audience tonight. We have Kevin Steiner here and Claire Rolfs, and we also have Lori Winters from the museum, and looks like Dale Kent as well. Couple of those particular members have been part of a group that has been leading in concert with the city, this charge to have the Downtown Master Plan created, and they've been instrumental in the success of this project, and we're very thankful for them. So thanks, guys.
Thank you, Jess.
Good evening, Council. Craig Hubner with Grave. I'm going to spend hopefully no more than five minutes just giving a summary of what these plans, including your packet, include. And then I'd love to close and invite Mr. Steiner up here and anyone else from private leaders to give any input as well. So why are we doing this plan? You may be surprised here, but the actual last Downtown Focus Plan was completed in 1999. There was a river-focused vision in 2006, so it's been over a decade since downtown has really been looked at and created a vision. So that's what the deliverable here includes, is a new vision for downtown. There's desire for recent and future projects to fit into a larger vision for downtown. There's a lot of current projects and excitement in downtown, and how do we make sure that those projects, as well as future, again, fit together with a longer-range vision for downtown? And then what are immediate actions that can take place in the next year, in the next three years? Immediate things that the city can do, but also business owners, private leaders, investors in downtown that can, again, bolster downtown and make it an even more vibrant place than it is today. When we look at the downtown, we're focused on the right there is a map of the downtown. And while there's a specific geographic boundary, I want to caution, you know, we focus on this area, but there's things outside of that boundary that influence downtown. So Regner Park, the surrounding neighborhoods, all influence this downtown area. What came out of this plan is actually two separate documents that you can see there, and I'll give a little summary of both, but there's a Downtown Master Plan, and then what's called a Downtown Streetscape Master Plan. And as you would guess, the streetscape is focused a little bit more on the actual public rights of way, and the Downtown Master Plan is focused both on public and privately-owned land within that downtown area. This project began in early 2023, and again, the hope tonight is these two plans would be adopted as part of the city's vision. As part of this project, there was an intensive amount of engagement, including specific interviews with stakeholders, developers, with all of you, one-on-one sessions that we conducted. There were online surveys, both to the overall community and also specific business owners, as well as workshops with private sector leaders and city staff. I wanted to just highlight a few items from the community-wide survey to give a highlight and flavor of what the respondents voiced as part of this planning process. So as far as who took the survey and how often they frequent in downtown, this slide shows that about 50% of respondents visit downtown at least once per week. So you have a very attractive downtown that does attract your community, which is a great, great asset. When we asked, what do you like most about visiting downtown West Bend? Some of the top responses there on the right, you can see, were restaurant options, walkable environment, and the Riverwalk or River Access. When we asked people what they dislike about visiting downtown West Bend, some of the top responses were parking, new construction, and lack of scenic views of the river from Main Street. What I would note on this is even though these are dislikes or negatives, parking and new construction can sometimes, I would say, there can be worse things than, than those as well. So parking is absolutely addressed as part of the plan, as far as how do we balance supply of parking, but also efficiently use the parking that does exist and optimize that parking. When we asked what improvements would help you visit downtown West Bend more often, top responses were better use of underutilized properties, multi-season outdoor seating and dining, and public restrooms. When we asked what uses are most important to bolster downtown, we heard diversity of shopping, again, multi-season outdoor dining and entertainment and nightlife. So with all of those responses, those are interwoven into the actual master plan document. And what this slide shows is the master plan includes a vision and guiding principles. And I just want to read the vision. It says to celebrate the downtown as the focus of community life in West Bend and the keeping place of community heritage. What's important about this vision and then the guiding principles is these guiding principles should be revisited by you as elected officials, but also be known to the community that any new development, whether it's private sector or even public initiatives that the city takes forward, needs to be looked at through a lens of these guiding principles to, again, make sure that there's this cohesive vision in alignment with projects. As far as what the plan recommends, there's four main categories within the master plan document. There's an urban design framework, which I'll describe in a second. There's circulation and parking recommendations. There's development and redevelopment recommendations. And then there's what's called placemaking or activation strategies. That last category again is immediate actions that we hope to see take place within the next three years in downtown. The urban design framework is kind of the overarching diagram for you as elected officials, but also the community to understand what are some of the bigger ideas or focus areas in the downtown. So you'll see different categories there that are referenced, such as gateway markers, important streets, or streetscaping enhancements, public gathering spaces, redevelopment opportunities. All of these different categories within the plan document receive greater narrative descriptions and also some visual imagery as far as what these improvements are. But again, this is a page within the plan where people could pick up, understand a specific area in the downtown and see some of the larger-scale changes that are proposed. Within the Streetscape Master Plan, there's a vision of different categories, including improvements for roadways, parking, streetscape, amenities and materials, wayfinding, signage, a brand and a sense of place, and maintenance of all these important items. As part of the Streetscape Master Plan, these are two diagrams from that plan. On the left is downtown parking. So what this shows is existing on-street parking type. We have parallel, angled, and perpendicular in the number of spaces, what's public, what's permit parking. But what I wanted to highlight here is you'll three, see three circles there. Each of those circles has a P on there, and what those are meant to represent are potential future locations of an actual parking structure within downtown. And the plan identifies what's called a shared parking structure solution, meaning that all of these sites would not just be a city-owned parking structure, but each of these sites actually has the land opportunity and availability for a joint venture with a private sector individual. So this is the fire station property. This is the city-owned parking lot office, Seventh by the post office, and then the Westbury Bank property. So all three of these sites are large enough to accommodate a structure, but also could see private sector redevelopment, such as residential or commercial uses, that could use that parking structure, but also have enough spaces that could be used during non-peak hours for that private use for the public to utilize. On the right side, every single street within downtown is identified for a future vision. Some of these visions are major reconstruction of roadways, and others are more minor improvements, such as new streetscape amenities, benches or trees. But all of them, again, have a vision so that the city understands and the public understands what the future of these streets are. Two examples of this, State Highway 33 and Sixth Avenue. So each page, each street again includes kind of a vision of what they could look like. State Highway 33 is envisioned to potentially look at the existing central two-way turn lane and transform that into a raised planted median within the downtown area that would act as a welcoming gateway to downtown. It also includes some expansion of right-of-way on the south side of the roadway. We would need to work obviously with the DOT, who has jurisdiction here, but there's properties on the south, and the widening of that right-of-way would allow for a wider pedestrian accommodations, which isn't very pedestrian-friendly right now. In Sixth Avenue, this is seen and identified within the plan as another major roadway reconstruction. So we have a beautiful new Main Street downtown. Sixth Avenue has that equal opportunity. It's not very pedestrian-friendly. It's very narrow sidewalks right now. So the plan envisions a reconstruction that, again, makes this more of a pedestrian-prioritized street that accommodates new redevelopment on the street as well. Within the plan, every street is identified, and the left shows where future street trees could be located within the downtown, either in bumpouts, within the terrace, within planter pots, or no street trees at all if, if it really, really truly can accommodate that. Wayfinding and gateway markers are identified within the downtown as well, and that's the diagram on the right. As I mentioned, the plan includes redevelopment opportunities. So all of the different orange circles on the left identify narratives of future uses. And then a select few on the right actually show a visual or a sketch with imagery of what that could look like. So on the right, we're looking at Main Street and Old Settlers Park, and it's envisioned for that public space to kind of have a reimagined or redesigned look there, with Sixth Avenue being redesigned adjacent to it to make it a larger public gathering space. Additionally, along the Riverwalk, where the current kayak launch is, there's envisioned a new public gathering outdoor green space as well, with more family-friendly features that could be accommodated there. The final two slides here, again, as I referenced, the plan identifies what's called an activation plan. These again are immediate action items that could take place within the next three years. These again are items that the city, capital C, public could initiate, but also business owners or other investors in downtown could look at and implement. Things like creative outdoor seating, again, multi-season outdoor activities, lighting, landscaping are all different elements. And what I want to close on is this is already starting to take place and being an initiative that the private sector leaders here tonight are really spearheading. How do we ensure that Main Street is even more beautiful than it is right now? And we're focusing on looking at greening Main Street, adding trees within planter pots, low-level plantings, as well as hanging flower baskets from the street poles. So this is going to make Main Street even more beautiful than, than it is as you see today. So with that, I want to thank you for listening and your participation as part of this plan. I'm able to answer questions, but maybe before that, I'd love to invite Kevin Steiner and Claire up here to, to give any summary as well from their perspective.
Thank you, Craig. Good evening. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor, for your interest in this important project. Claire Rolfs and I are here representing our private sector group. Our committee has very deep roots in the West Bend community, and it's our desire to make West Bend an even greater destination for people to live, work, play, enjoy, visit. We're all proud of our community, and we have tremendous assets that we enjoy. You can start with, in the downtown area, you can start with the Riverwalk, Regner Park, our beautiful new Main Street, our historic district, Moa, the Bend, the Tower Heritage Center, and the list goes on. And I think we should all be very proud of all that that has been created in our city. So several of us got together in the private sector, and we discussed if there's a way that we could help the city become an even better destination for people to come and visit, for people to live here and work here. And so we got the idea of, well, and knowing that there had been some time before there was a, there'd been some time in the past since we had a plan, that perhaps we would be willing to 100% fund a master plan. So we got together with Jay. We discussed the idea. He supported the idea. We appreciate Jay and Jess working with us to put together this master plan that Grave, you know, has, has put together. So at this time, well, and Craig talked about some immediate needs or immediate activation plans, and Claire's going to share with you what we believe is the number one priority in that activation plan. So I'd like Claire to share that. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, good evening. All right, the greening of West Bend. This is our opportunity to develop a public-private partnership with you guys, and hopefully invest in our community for the future, so that our property values increase, your tax revenue increases, and by and large, it just gets bigger and better. And I want to ask you tonight to join us in this public partner, private, public partnership, private-public partnership, okay? We are going to be asking you to contribute significantly to the growth of West Bend, to the development and growth of West Bend. And as our partner, I think that's only appropriate. So does anybody have any questions for me? Nothing?
What is it specifically you're asking for, Claire?
Well, I'm not asking you for anything tonight, because we will be working in the next several weeks on developing the prices and an MOU on who's going to do what. But as our partner, we would like your significant partnership in this with us. So this, I will say, this is not a gift. It's only partially a gift. So just to sort of get you tuned to that idea.
I want to mention, so.
Go ahead.
So obviously, we're looking for approval of this plan, and we know that there's obviously a lot in this plan, and not all this will get done. And this plan over a 20-year period will change. This is, we look at the greening of downtown as our number one priority. It's a beautiful downtown right now to think about with trees and with hanging baskets and flower pots. And so it's, when you start any of this, any of the landscaping, notice it's not insignificant. So we're right working with Grave right now. And all we're asking is, is that we're willing to continue to invest dollars, and we're hoping that in return, you also find ways. And we know that obviously you have lots of pressures and lots of challenges. We know that. And obviously, we all know what's number one. But as we move forward with this plan, our goal, our desire is that it doesn't sit on the shelf, that it actually, that there's some ownership obviously from the city and continued ownership from us, that we continue to execute portions of this plan. But this all takes money, and we're willing to contribute going forward, and we're hoping that you also will find ways to help us contribute as well. So we want, what we say is equal, but we know that equal's not always exactly 50/50. There's in-kind things you can do. There's all kinds of ways that you can help us execute this plan. So going forward, we hope tonight we get approval for this, and going forward, we'll be back to you soon when we wanted to talk about, when we have the details with this greening of downtown, because we'd like to really actually begin to place orders so we'd have these things arrive in the spring, the pots and the, all the things that Craig talked about that we need. And so in a way, time is of the essence, but we know we don't have all the details tonight. But we do what we're really looking for is a public-private, you know, partnership.
Say that three times really fast. But we want to get these pots ordered. So our group is willing to step up and order these pots based on our faith in you to become our partner.
There's really three components. There's pots, there's plants, and there's planting. And actually Roots and Branches is willing to help. We have, you know, people to help. And so, yeah, but happy to answer any other questions.
I was, just kind of a comment, I guess. I was very excited to hear about this, that you guys were willing to step forward and make a, make a master plan for downtown, that we didn't have, we didn't have something specific. And from the looks of it, the company did a great job putting this together. And as far as I'm concerned, I support it 100%. And also, as far as I'm concerned, I can only speak for myself, but I'm a, I'm a very busy hairdresser barber up in Barton. And one of the main things I've been hearing about downtown is how beautiful it is during the summer. And of course, people are talking about the flowers and the trees and whatnot. And the first look I had at the first engineering of the downtown Main Street was like, nothing. And Jay knows, we talked about that, and he went back and had some more green space added. So I totally understand the importance of doing that. And I, again, I completely support that. I know the city's going to be a little bit limited in what we can do, and we have, like you said, we have other pressures on us, so we have to be a little bit careful. But yeah, I'd make a motion to approve.
So this is a motion to approve the downtown master plan and the downtown streetscape master plan. There was a motion by Elderman Model and a second by Elderman Burquist. Any more comments, questions?
Is, is there, I know that we've got, we've got our Parks Director in the room, and I, but I just feel like it has to be said that this is not going to happen without more help for our Parks Director. Our Parks Department's going to need more employees or something, because it can't all be done by Roots and Branches. It can't all be done by volunteers. This is, we're talking a huge endeavor here, right? And I really, I really hope that somehow we can get something added in there, because I don't want to.
I think that's a fair comment. I was with Mike and this team last week and going around and looking at where some of these planter boxes would go. We talked about who's going to water them, who's going to pick cigarette butts out of them and, you know, on a Sunday morning, that sort of thing. And I think that would all have to come down to the MOU and really just laying out who's responsible for what. And that's, that is something that we've talked about. I don't have the answer to it. I don't know if anybody does tonight, but it's absolutely something to take into consideration.
Yeah, it's, I know, I realize it's not something we can really get into right now, but it's certainly something that needs to be taken into consideration, because they don't have enough guys for that, so.
Elderman Dearing.
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank you and the rest of the private sector leadership group that pulled this together, because A, it's a phenomenal plan, and B, very needed for the city of West Bend for us to continue to grow as a great place to live, work, play, eat, drink, visit, entertain, what have you. I think it's important that, you know, as we can consider these plans right now, it's not necessarily about digging into the specifics of the greening of West Bend, but rather adopting the master plan, which is intended to be a plan to serve this community for the next 20 years as that, that guidepost, that North Star that we have for the downtown area and expanding beyond that. So in full support of it, and again, thank you for the efforts and the investment that you have personally made and continue to make in the city of West Bend.
Elderman Allen.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Citizens Committee for commissioning this and kicking it off. I think its value is that it provides a way to evaluate development alternatives. I mean, it gives us sort of a framework to view changes to use of property and so on. So I'm, I'm excited to see where it goes.
Any more comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Please stay there just for a second. I'm going to take up item number nine, which is a resolution that I'll read, and then I'll ask for a motion at the end. Whereas the city of West Bend acknowledges that a thriving downtown is vital to the economic prosperity and overall success of the entire city. And whereas the creation of a short-term and long-term strategic master plan for the development and enhancement of the downtown area is important for the continued success of the downtown area. And whereas on March 20th, 2023, the city of West Bend Common Council authorized the acceptance of $110,265 in financial support by private sector leaders to underwrite the development of a short-term and long-term downtown master plan. And whereas the city of West Bend entered into a contract with Grave to administer the project. And whereas on February 6th, 2024, the city of West Bend Plan Commission reviewed the downtown master plan and streetscape master plan documents and unanimously approved a recommendation for adoption to the common council. And whereas tonight, February 19th, 2024, the city of West Bend Common Council unanimously approved the adoption of the downtown master plan and streetscape master plan. Now therefore, be it resolved, the city of West Bend expresses its sincerest gratitude to the private, private sector leaders for their contributions, and be it further resolved that the city of West Bend is dedicated to collaborating with the private sector leaders to implement the downtown master plan and downtown streetscape plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Elderman Allen, and a second by everyone else.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very, very much. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very, very much. All right, we will talk a little bit more about downtown as it relates to parking, and we're going to have a review of our parking regulations by Chief Dearing.
Evening again. Like to first just make a quick mention, Troop 762, I'm glad to have you here. What a great meeting for you to attend. You saw how our community supports us. You're going to hear about some good, good enforcement of the law and good community involvement in the law, and I just want to tell you, boys, it's good that you're prepared. I'm an Eagle Scout myself, so if you keep on task here, someday you'll be up on the podium too. So I'm glad you're here. Thank you. As we all committed to a year ago, we said we'd been back in front here to discuss our parking ordinance and its changes. And I'm here to tell you that I think it's a, so far, it has been a tremendous success in our simplification of that ordinance and creating what is good law, easily followed and engaged law. So our nine-to-five posted restrictions of customer only, I would say that I would really like to thank our downtown businesses, because we have, we have experienced changed in behavior. If you've driven through the downtown, you've definitely seen that there has been change. So I don't want to take credit for it. It really, or our department doesn't take credit for it. It's exactly what we talked about, is having engaged business owners that are being good neighbors. I'll just give you a quick review and then certainly open it up to questions for you. First and foremost is our CSO, April Casmeric, I think has been a critical part to making those, helping to have those changes take place. She has absolutely taken ownership of the downtown. Our pledge to you and to the community was that we would focus on education and voluntary compliance, and we truly have seen that in place. However, April is also not afraid to be action-based, and she has taken it upon herself to mediate some differences amongst some of the business owners downtown, to really work through and have some agreements. We've seen a very unique agreement with Tenny's and another business in that area to alleviate some of the problems that were occurring in the alley, and they actually even came to a partnership in sharing some spaces. So April has done wonders. She is not afraid to make contact and talk with our business owners. We've been in the post office several times and some of the other businesses that were seeing compliance. However, as we kind of knew would be the case, sometimes we will have to, have to look at enforcement to make sure that we're reinforcing positive behavior. So in 2024, we are switching from that education model, solely education model, to more of an enforcement model as well. It's certainly, the ordinance is known. So we will be moving to that. In '23, we issued one citation. Lots of contacts with businesses, but one citation for a customer-only violation. In 2024, already we've issued seven, so not, not great, but I think those were people, I know they were people that April has given the chance to comply, and now it's just going to be a matter of time to really change those behaviors. So I'm begging the community that's watching, I know several of our business owners are, is to please be part of the solution, continue to, the vast majority of, to have that voluntary compliance. And if not, we make it very easy for you to be engaged in that enforcement through our online complaint, contacting the police department, waving April down, whatever it takes. Please help us be part of that solution and be good neighbors. It's really what it really is all about. April is a data collection expert. She has certainly noticed some of the, if you remember, one of our goals, this was certainly not to be a hindrance to businesses, was to look at the people who understood the need for customer parking but refused to be part of the solution. So she certainly has identified that. Not trying to be a tough guy up here, but for our businesses watching, we are going to switch to enforcement, so please, please be part of the solution. Talk to your employees, make sure we have tons of public parking for our employees. If you drive through our lots on the other side of the river, they are always open. There's plenty of parking to be had. Please be part of that, especially be easier as the weather gets better. Issues that we're still addressing, one, finishing up the construction. We're taking it in front of the Traffic Safety Commission just to document and formalize the locations of our handicap parking, our loading zones, and those issues, working through that. We'll have our EV charging sections coming online in the near future and working through that with our good partner Max and our admin team to figure out exactly how we want to address that from an enforcement standpoint. And it'll, like all of this, will rely on just absolute voluntary compliance and working with the people. And most people will absolutely comply without the need for the police department to be involved. But for those that do, will be involved. Loading zones has been somewhat of an issue. We're working with, and April is not shy, neither is our deputized Jay. He's made so many contacts with our drivers to have them be part of the solution as well, I, myself, and officers. And just, I'm sure you've seen it when you've driven downtown, not utilizing the loading zone, large trucks, making deliveries, blocking the flow of traffic. That's something that we're addressing. And for the vast majority of contacts have a very positive outcome, just educating where the loading zones are and how to use it. A couple of differences of opinions, including with some of our business owners, so we'll be addressing that to make sure. And I understand, it's very easy for the double park and running the deliveries, but we can all work together to make sure that it's a safe and effective flow of traffic. I did have a request from Todd Tenny's to bring this up to you. One of the issues that Todd has identified, and I have to tell you, I think it's a great problem to have, is that from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., there's so much customer parking, so many people utilizing our downtowns, mostly in our restaurants, which we heard from Graff is one of the biggest draws to the area, that we're, that there's a shortage of customer parking. Very clearly, not employees parking, not anything in violation, that it's customers. We have so much interest in our downtown that we need to, or that he would ask us to look at some options to provide that. And this is something that Todd has been very consistent on, that he felt was an issue last year, and says that some of the other businesses are. So again, opening up, please, know how to get ahold of me, let me know what it is. We'll bring it in front of bid and continue those conversations as well. One of the solutions he had is some shorter-term parking, a 15-minute parking zone. We're not, I'm not opposed to that, but we certainly need to discuss that through removing any opportunities for customers to park. We, you remember a lot of passion in front of us last year about people utilizing our hairstylists, shopping, and such, such things that wouldn't have been accomplished in 15 minutes. That's certainly the other side of that. So we'll, we'll continue to have those discussions. And again, I just think it's a, it's a great problem to have. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you have for me.
Yeah, recognizing that there is a need for short-term, I need to run in and grab, you know, grab the plunger, because I really need it, and Tenny's has got it.
I believe the kids say TMI.
Whatever, you know, some kind of an emergent, something that can be handled quickly. Could you come, come to us with a proposal for where you might cite, get with April and figure out where we might cite some short-term parking?
Well, I think that's a focus that we'll bring to the bid to determine. You're taking away parking spots that will be designated for the customer. So I'm not sure that's within the venue of the police department to say who has more priority of use of those parking spots. If it's an employee or a, someone who's not a customer, then we'll take action on it. I'll certainly be involved in those, Mark, but I don't believe that's within my realm to develop that. I know some of the suggestions have been some of the few spots within the Walnut parking lot that's adjacent to Mr. Tenny's business, but he also mentioned taking other spots throughout the downtown. And I think that's something that the other business owners should have a chance to weigh in on. That answer satisfactory?
Yeah. Would April have any suggestions based on the fact that she's obviously data-driven and understands the flow better than probably anybody in this room?
I think I'm going to rely on my first answer, though. I'm not sure that's within the police department's venue. We'll, we'll certainly participate in those conversations.
We'll go Spex and then Model.
I have kind of the same comments, that if there are businesses that do want something like that, is this going to involve an ordinance change also that, I mean, to implement those kind of spots, are we going to need to update the ordinance, which means I have to go through the whole process? So really, it should start at the bid board for that discussion, bring the, bring the key players in and, you know, come up with a plan.
Yeah, the simple answer is, is yes. One of the benefits of the simplification of our ordinance, remember it was kind of omnibus legislation at the time, and now it's really posted restriction. So it would be, if that was something that our community wanted to pursue, we would certainly have the mechanism to do that. I'd just be honest with you, enforcement of a 15-minute parking spot is going to be a challenge. We've discussed it with the staff. It's, the police department's always up for a challenge, right? So it wouldn't be, it would, we would probably end up much the same as a handicap parking violation, complaint-driven, and keep an eye on it. But yes, you're right. But I do think the bid exists to be a representative form of government to us, to help us to make sure that we're representing the majority, so. I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, first of all, I can't believe it's been a year since we talked about this last. I said to Jay on the phone earlier, I thought it had been six months ago. So, but it has been kind of an unconventional year, so I imagine some of April's data is going to be a little bit wonky because of that. And I assume that Todd's suggestion or concern came since the, since the streets been back open again?
Oh, yes.
Because I know we added a bunch of parking spots, and, and there's even more to come. So I don't know if that's going to, if that's.
I just talked to Mr. Tenny's last week. It was a very, I need to tell you, it was a very respectful conversation and very consistent with some of the concerns that he raised last year too. So certainly has the voice.
And third, are we hiring this April girl or what?
Are we hiring her?
Yeah. I know she's a CSO. That means she's not a full-time police officer yet.
She's our full-time community service officer, so she's.
Okay, gotcha. Oh, perfect.
Yeah, no, thank you, yeah. No, she's in the right spot.
Good.
We got her in the right seat. We got her in the right seat on the bus.
Any more questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Our next item for action tonight is an ordinance to amend the 2020 Comprehensive Plan for the City of West Bend for a change in the recommended land use from commercial to industrial in the 2020 Comprehensive Plan for the City of West Bend for approximately 3.8 acres of land located at the southeast corner of South Main Street and West Progress Drive. Jim, do you want to take us through that, and then we'll entertain a motion?
Yeah, real quick on this one. So in February of this year, our planning commission held a public hearing for the land use change. We're asking the request for the council to adopt the ordinance to change the land use of this area from commercial land use to an industrial land use. This area's been vacant for quite a while. It's been kind of one of our weird areas that we have where it can, has a lot of potential for different uses. So we do have a potential buyer here that's willing to redevelop that corner. So we're asking the council to consideration the, the change from that commercial to industrial. The other item that's on the agenda right after this one is the actual permanent zoning for that, so we're asking the zoning to be permanent, or to, the property be permanently zoned from the temporary use that we have out there to the M3 Business Park zoning.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Sternig and Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion?
Just a question. Is that the place where that, it's got a building in that on there, or is it just an empty lot?
So originally, it was originally the Minns Farm. That the property owner that acquired the, the property has demolished the, the home and the barn and all that stuff, and has taken everything out. So he's, that's the area he's looking to redevelop.
Okay, thank you.
Sparts.
This is like close to the subdivision, the Heron Street subdivision and that. Is there going to be any issues that they had, like with Melkraft or anything like that?
No, in this, the zoning that we have for that is actually a, is a business park-type setting, so it's going to be light industrial and, you know, more intensive commercial, and it's on the far north end, right adjacent to Progress Drive and South Main Street.
Any more questions? I'll take the first resolution first, and that is the recommended land use from commercial to industrial.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Sparts. Any comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next resolution is the same property, and it is to change the temporary zoning to M3 Planned Business Park. Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Our last item of business tonight is a discussion on the possibility of a city flag for the City of West Bend. I was approached by Mr. Zurnia, a member of our community several months ago, and I know he's spoken to many of you as well about this idea of adopting a city flag, and so put it on the agenda tonight to have the common council discuss that, whether it's something that we want to pursue or not. Obviously Maxim's here tonight and can answer questions or kind of how he came up with this idea. Any initial thoughts, comments, justice, go ahead.
Yeah, when, when Maxim approached me about it too, after, after a meeting one day, I was very kind of excited to hear that somebody's interested in doing this. When I first came on board six years ago, of course, I had my American flag flying outside the shop, and I wanted to proudly put underneath that the West Bend flag. Lo and behold, we don't have a West Bend flag, so this is the time to do it.
And this is, just so everyone had set the stage, this is just a discussion item tonight. This is not no action tonight, but wanted to bring this item to the council. Maxim, if you want to address the council, or we can ask questions along the way, that'd be great.
Perfect. Good evening, everybody. My name is Maxim Zurnia. Before we get started, I just want to give a brief summary. I mean, this is something I've been working on for almost a year now, and I'm grateful to be addressing all of you. It was around spring of 2023 that I found out that the City of Port Washington had adopted their own official city flag after a middle schooler named Ben Lauren sent a letter to their mayor, and I thought that was a cool thing for their community, something they'll benefit from, and I thought, well, why doesn't West Bend have a flag? That's a community I care about, and they're definitely going to benefit from that. And I looked around at the community and saw, see if anybody was pursuing that, nobody was, so I said, well, why not me? That summer, I spent two to three weeks knocking on doors. I actually knocked on Alderman Berquist's door once, and I went to farmers' markets and county fairs, collecting signatures of people that supported the idea of West Bend adopting a flag. And then I also asked them if they approved the my flag, which I didn't just throw random colors up here, these have symbolism regarding his, like the history, industry, or geography, which you all should have a copy of on your packets, and I'll go into further detail if you guys want me to, or at the end of, when I'm done saying stuff. So an overwhelming majority of like people that actually answered their doors were interested and asked questions, and I've spoken to many old and new community leaders, and they've had similar feedback. They've, they, they all agree that this is something that the city would benefit from. And more than that, this is a opportunity for the city. I mean, it opens up a whole new realm of possibilities in marketing, advertisements, promotionals. It's a, it's an opportunity for our Rotary Club or other clubs even that, that want to represent themselves elsewhere. I mean, we're creating a visual symbol of pride for the city, and that's also something that individuals can use. In essence, this is also a perfect time to be doing this, in my opinion, with the downtown redevelopment plan and even the River Walk going on. All of this stuff is an essential step in building a unique sense of character in the City of West Bend. But the means of choosing a flag is, I would envision that the city would choose a flag designed through a public contest, very similar to how the City of Port Washington would, which is where we would have a public contest where anybody can submit their own design, and then depending on how many designs are submitted, it would come to the common council, and you guys would narrow it down to however you feel are appropriate, whether that be four, six, or however much. And then it would go out to a public vote where anybody can vote on which design they want to see, and depending on that vote, that flag would then be hopefully adopted. I want to stress that this flag should be strictly under the public domain, under a Creative Commons Zero license, because of this is something that we're giving businesses and people an opportunity to merchandise. I mean, we've all seen the People's Flag of Milwaukee that is used everywhere on merchandise, the Wisconsin State Flag, we see that a lot on merchandise. Now, the actual way to adopt the flag, you're going to get a much more professional answer from Minister DeChambeau, but from my understanding, you're, it's going to take, looking at other cities, it's going to take a resolution defining that or outlining that the city wants to see a flag and how you want the election to go. And then, once that election is done, we have a flag that you guys want. You would have to have, make a new chapter in your ordinances on flag policy and however that flag is defined. Financially, if the city were to purchase these flags from a local company, BG Decal Apparel, and I can't speak for them, obviously, a three-foot by five-foot flag, which is the standard size, it would cost around $60 for a one-sided and $80 for a double-sided without the pole. And if the city weren't able to find a place for this in the budget, I would be more than happy to fundraise, and I would imagine West Bend would want to go through a local company to do this. And I can't speak for BG Decal Apparel, but I've spoken to someone involved there, and they seem interested. And I've heard some comments about the POW flag. I want to just say that my understanding of the POW flag etiquette is that it would not have to be replaced, it would be a, quoting from their website, is on a one-foot pole, it would, the order would go, the United States flag, then the POW flag, and then a state flag or civic flag. And if you guys have any comments, questions, concerns, please ask me, I'll do my best to answer, and if my answer is not adequate, please email me. You all should have a bottom of a letter you guys shall have.
Very good. Thank you, Maxim. Hold on, Manellin.
Since it actually isn't in our, in our packet, could you go through the symbolism, the colors, and the design of your proposed flag?
Of course. So the green, well, first off, the angle of the actual flag is trying to reflect the angle of the river that we see in West Bend. The green represents the surrounding forestry and the Kettle Moraine outside of West Bend. The blue represents, the bottom lighter blue represents the, just the river as a whole, that's a very important part of our community, about our history, it's a very, the main reason why it was founded. The darker shade of blue at the top there represents the Barton, since that was incorporated into the village in the 1960s, I believe, and that's something that I believe deserves to be represented, because that is a significant part of our city.
Super important.
This gray strip here represents the historical downtown development, because that is also very important. I think of it as the cultural heart of our city. And this burgundy color, I see it used a lot by the city on the website, I mean, you see it on the library, it's even on the tower, the old bricks downtown, we had them. And this just represents the rest of the city, the industry that we see there. And this white, I mean, I don't know if any of you have recognized it, it's the tower silhouette. What you understand is a county building, but I think it's outgrown that, I mean, it's in the middle of a city, and it is, it dominates the skyline, and I don't think it could be used as a symbol to define the county. It's, it's a much better, I mean, it's on our city seal. And that's white, it's just, white is a general symbol of hope, and yeah.
I'm, I'm not completely sure, but I think the original courthouse, which is now an insurance agency, has the same silhouette as on that.
Oh, the Old City Hall?
What?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Max, you want to turn around and show everybody else what you have?
I guess a few guys have seen it. All right.
Thank you.
So what would we be looking tonight to, to tell Max to continue in his efforts, or just a general kind of thumbs up, or what goes beyond this discussion?
Well, I, I, let's start, I guess, if there was absolutely no interest in what Maxim is doing, I think, you know, tonight might be a night to, to tell him that, so that he doesn't keep working his tail off, and it's never going to happen. I mean, if, and, and we're not voting on anything tonight, but if there is any sort of an appetite to, to do what Maxim is proposing, you know, and you tell him, great job and keep working on it, then, go ahead.
Yeah, quick question, either Jay or Ian. Is there any specific process that we need to follow?
I mean, symbolic, I don't think there's any specific process to adopt something symbolic like this.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I like the idea, and I don't know how the, how the process you would like to do to, to get one down to the final flag, but I, I would like to see what you come up with, and I think it's a good idea. I personally think that all the effort you put into it, I'd be interested in seeing what you've got for a final answer.
And there's, there's precedent with, with Port Washington, sounds like that was a functional process they followed, and, you know, we might, we might study that a little bit closer and follow that if it, if it works, right?
Right, and I've, I've reached out to Mayor Nitski, and he's, he's given his, he thinks it was, it worked out fine, there wasn't a lot of, the community was in on it, it was a very successful vote that they did.
And you could, you could get specific process from him if it's not, if it's not already obvious.
What do you mean?
You could, just how, how to go about it real specifically, you could get that from him.
Um, or, but. Like, I would imagine that you have like a month or two months, or if you have an open submission, or anybody can submit their own flag design, because I don't want to just push mine through, I don't think that's right. And then if, after that deadline is met, whatever, one or two months later, it would get sent out to the public where anybody could vote on it, on whichever design they think best represents the city, and then depending on that winner, whoever wins that, and I also recommend that the city uses ranked choice voting in that, where basically you put your first favorite, and then if that one is scrapped, your vote would go to your second favorite, third favorite, so on. And then that, once that vote is done, the flag would be hopefully sent here, where you guys would approve that.
Sparts.
I like the concept, and I think it'd be a great way to try to bring the community together again and, and keep the community involved. Civic organizations, I think, would, would jump on board with you. If you make a presentation or two to them, they might help you even, but look for, you can muster some help that way, I'm sure, but I, I think it's a great process, and I know, excuse me, the city staff is busy, and I don't know how much time they can commit, but I'm sure if we came up with a decent program and something, there'd be some help too, once we get to the point where we're ready to adopt one, and, I mean, for advice and that, we can always give that. So, but no, I think it's a great program, great idea. Good work.
My biggest question would be, how do we, I mean, if we have some kind of voting, you know, is, is it a, you know, Instagram or Twitter or Facebook?
We've got a huge Facebook following, right, Jess? Is that something that could be put together on Facebook, or is that too unofficial, or?
No, we wouldn't do a survey on Facebook.
I, I don't think, I mean, I think there needs to be some, you know, if you really want to survey the community, there needs to be some way, you know, one person, one vote kind of thing. That's why I was curious how Port Townsend did it.
If I could jump in, it would just be kind of like, my, the way Port Washington did it, I believe, and also the way I imagine you would do it, would just be like, just a normal election, you would go to a polling station, fill it out, and that'd be it. Of course, that is my suggestion, so you can do it what they want.
Sternig.
First off, I want to applaud you for the effort that you've put in to this, to get it to this point, your meeting with the council. And I think that's appreciated by all of us. As a marketing, communications, branding professional, when I hear about a flag and a new symbol for the City of West Bend, I'm instantly taken aback, going, okay, timeout, let's think about this from a strategic standpoint, understand the need for it, understand the wants and want, need, desire of the community and this body when we look at that. And I say that because we have brand guidelines, we have a, a visual identity, the City of West Bend with the tower on it currently, that we use across all of our communications, whether it be the website, social media, vehicles, other locations, I'm sure, I probably don't know everywhere it's used. So part of that is understanding what is the need driving this, and then it becomes, is it something that's consistent with? Is it something that's completely different from? When we talk about future events, and this is all about just asking the questions to really think through strategically what it is we're doing, why we're doing it, and then how we're going to use it in execution. And part of that is, okay, so if we are now going to be going out and promoting events in the City of West Bend, what is the identity that we are using and taking out both within and beyond our community from a visual standpoint? Is it the City of West Bend from a logo and icon standpoint that we currently use, or a local icon that we're using on flags that is used across any other medium, similar to what Milwaukee has done with theirs? So my caution from, from that perspective is not to say, don't do it or do it. I think my, my word of caution is, let's really think through what we're doing from a strategic standpoint, to make sure that if we go down a path, we're doing it for the right reasons, and that we arrive at something that really becomes an asset for the city and the community, as opposed to something that could potentially be in conflict with the current assets that we have that represent the City of West Bend.
If I could comment on that?
Sure.
To me, a city flag or a city seal, that you're never really going to see, or not never, but you're not going to see often, like, people in the, like, residents of the city actually like, using that in any kind of way, like Justice Model, was he wanted to fly a flag outside his house.
I would, yeah, right.
So you can't really fly a seal, and my, if we look at. So you can't really fly a seal and my, if we look at like any government, let's say like that has both a flag and a seal, let's say just broad United States government, they'll use the seal as, on like documents and everything still. While the flag is just like, it's a resource that the city or any municipality or government is giving to the people. Like it can easily act as a decoration, like downtown or anywhere. It's just, it's another resource.
Any other comments?
I, I would just suggest maybe working with city, city staff on process. You know, how do we, how do we get to a, a vote? Answers maybe some of the questions that Mr. Sternig brings up, you know? And if you could bring back a, a game plan, real specific, you know, not like, well, a couple of months or a month here. You know, I mean, real specific and maybe even dates, you know what I'm saying? As a, as a, as a specific proposal, after working with city staff, I think maybe to see that again would be great, as far as I'm concerned. Without a guarantee that it's going to get adopted, you know what I mean? But I think if it's a, if it sounds, if it sounds reasonable and organized, I, I can imagine this, the council moving forward on that, so.
Just, just one piece of information to throw into this is, is we have a, you know, you talked about, we talked about the city vehicles. Well, our, our police vehicles in the city have a, a very different identity. You know, that's very graphical and, and maybe that would be something to take a look at. That was clearly a, a well-considered use of creating an identity for something. So. That's, that's a shout out to the PD.
So if the council wants to move forward, I guess I see two different paths. You can just charge Maxim in going, going on and conquering and, and that certainly could be applauded and adopted, like literally at your next meeting. I have zero problem with that at all. If that, that seems like the direction of the council that you're interested in. If you're looking for more of a Alderman Sternig approach where it's going to be a detailed rebranding, that, that's not something, we're a community development director behind, we're an assistant city engineer behind. That's not going to be a priority of the city of West Bend in the, in the next few months. That's just reality. So I, I'll certainly take direction of the council and be interested in your direction of, of Maxim. But I think you need to decide, you, you're either going to make this a, a significant rebranding approach and, and something that we have talked about as an organization, but it's just not anywhere near top of the radar kind of thing. Or just charge Maxim with going to the polling place like he suggested and having a, a flag and, and bringing it back to you for, for adoption, that, that's certainly within your power. I guess I view it as an either or though. I don't, I don't think it's, it can't be both. So Justice Alderman, to your, your suggestion of working with city staff, that, that's not something that.
No, okay.
No.
And if I could try mine again. I was hoping, and obviously I don't need to do this, but I was hoping I kind of just would hand it off, hand this idea kind of off to the city. Obviously I don't, I couldn't do it myself. Also, I just won't get as, I don't have all the resources. But my idea was handing it off to the city and then you guys would pass that resolution, having some kind of outlining the voting or the election. And then the results of that would come back to you guys for adoption.
And I, I think that idea is, is kind of more in line with what Mr. Sternig was, was describing is if we do go through some sort of a major rebranding of, of, you know, of our city image and things, could a flag be a part of that? Absolutely. You know, are, are we going to have any resources to put behind, like Jay said, doing voting and online polls and things like that? We're, we're just not. And so if this is something that you want to continue doing on your own and, and want to come back every, you know, couple of months to give us an update on where you're at, I'll be happy to put you on the agenda to do that. In my opinion, and I, I've told you this before, city flags can be very controversial. People either love them or hate them. I love the symbolism of your flag, but I can guarantee that there's going to be five other people who don't like it at all. And so then will we ever be able to adopt a flag that, you know, that everybody can get behind? I, I don't know. If it's something that we want to look at as a whole down the, it's, and I'll warn you, it's, it would be down the road. But I can promise you that it will be something that is part of maybe a bigger overall rebranding package of the city. So I guess that's, that's kind of where I'm at with it. I, I wanted you to know that I think the idea is, is great. I applaud you for all the work that you've done and, and, you know, investigating it, diving into it. If you want to continue doing that, great. And if not, we, we can take it on as a city, but again, probably a ways down the road. Any other comments in that regard? If not, I really appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you very much for your time and effort and your presentation.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Maxim.
We're going to move on to our reports tonight. We'll quickly, we'll do these quickly. Our bid meeting on February 6th.
Midboard recognized a quota. We approved our meeting minutes and our financial report without issue. We had one action item, which was to look at funding the construction of boxes to keep our brand-new Christmas decorations fresh and new. And we funded that. City of West Bend Public Works Department is going to construct storage crates so that when they're stored down at the sewage treatment plant, they, they're nice and pristine when they come out next year and they're protected. And then we had a good-of-the-order item, which was to convince local businesses to support our Bockfest, which is March 2nd. And I encourage you to get your tickets before they run out. I believe it's limited. Yes, that's it.
Yep.
And, and we could put the goat on, on our flag.
Very good.
That's it. Any questions?
Thank you. I'll handle the Plan Commission meeting from February 6th. And it was quite simple. It was the two items that we took action on tonight, the 3.2, 3.8 acres of land. Our next meeting is March 2nd? 4th. It's March 4th. And Alderman Butchlick, I will be out of town and unable to call into that meeting. Well, great. Who would like to lead our meeting? Alderman Allen, would you lead our common council meeting? You're going to be here?
Yeah.
I thought you were serious. All right. I will be out of town for March 4th and March 5th. I know we have a Plan Commission meeting. I'll be out of town for that as well. And hopefully Jed is feeling better by then and can lead that meeting. So any other announcements for the good of the order? If not, we'll see you at Bockfest on March 2nd. And buy your tickets, get your beers done, and the weather's looking like it's going to be great. So that'll be a great event. Thank you all for being here. Thank you all, city staff, for being here tonight. And good luck to our Boy Scouts. We're adjourned.